Welcome, everyone. This is Victor, Zoning Board of Appeals. Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge. If you, housekeeping issues, emergency exits, you'll see on the sides, out back, go through the lobby, restrooms are in the lobby. If you haven't done so already, please sign in. There are business cards out in the back table, next to the sign-in sheet, along with addresses and phone numbers of the planning department. Also at the back table are the proposed resolutions, along with the agenda. If you haven't done so already, please turn off or silence your cell phones. And if there are any conversations that do not relate to the hearing itself, please take them out so as not to disturb the particular hearing. As far as the hearings go, we have, whichever applicant comes forward, like we always have, if there's additional exhibits, please let us know so we can mark them accordingly. If you're referring to an exhibit, please let us know which exhibits you're talking about, and the very best you can use descriptive words, especially compass directions or structures, so that when Amber here is listening and taking the record, it's as clear as possible. We'd also ask that, to create a solid record, is not to talk over each other. So wait for each other to be finished, whether we're speaking, you're speaking, it does create and complicate issues if people are talking over each other. Again, Amber, not that she ever has a hard time, but you could create a difficult time because she may not know who's talking and what particular order. That would be helpful. All right. Next, the approval of the April 3rd, 2023. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Make that motion.
A second.
All right. I have to abstain, I was not here for those. Alexis, all right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, Valantown. Anyone here for the Valantown project? Okay.
I don't know if the applicant is.
I know, they may have just pulled in, so let's give them a moment, we can take the next application and circle back. Mr. Crutson? Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. Matt, you chaired the meeting, so would you like to summarize where we are and what the next steps are?
Sure, so, what I believe from the discussions that we had, there were a number of options, and it was a little, I'll say, a little confusing, right, in trying to determine exactly what the list of variances were, and kind of how it was going to look. I believe you kind of walked away with the action to provide us with a drawing, and kind of a list of, here's what I want. And when we discussed it, it was more of, well, if I can get this, I want this variance, if I can't get this, I want that variance. And we really just needed to kind of have you put it in a concise document, just say, here's what I need, right? Here's one, two, three, four, however many you were looking for, and have something that kind of visually depicts what you thought it was going to look like. And so that's, obviously, we couldn't have made a decision the last meeting because I had to go to the county, and so, kind of let you have some time to kind of put something together in some minutes. So I wasn't sure if you had that with you, or something you sent in, or...
Yeah, you had mentioned, like, taking some pictures, so I, well, first, you had mentioned finding like, an alternative to the "we buy gold" or "we buy silver" flags, and I looked for about three hours online and could find nothing. I mean, everything, every one says "we buy," which is the whole point of it, of course. There are none that say gold, or silver, or anything else, for that matter. I found "we buy coins," I found "we buy antiques," but there is nothing that I found on the internet. And when I called, like I said, the local company, it was almost $500 to if I want to design one, and then, of course, I can't design it, I can't bring it in, and then, you know, spend that money, and then have it turned down. So that didn't make any sense to me either. So that's, I took pictures, like, where it is now, which is basically where I would put it, 35 feet from the road. It's a lot farther than I'd like to see it, but I guess that's what I'm left with. As far as the window sign, I thought we had said that, I did want the one that said, there was just one sign, and not the one that was the four. So I took picture, I took pictures, which I can show you, of the window that I would want it in, but...
What variances exactly are you looking for?
Just to have the lightbox sign, and to put up a flag that, other than something that says "open."
I looked at code enforcement as I'm pulling it up, but I believe just having those two things, and just two variances, right? There's, there's kind of a ripple effect.
If it is possible to have a, I mean, that, one of the variances we talked about was having it a little closer than 35 feet from the road, because that puts it in the middle of the lawn.
How far? How far from the road?
Close as, like, as close as you guys will allow me to, 15 feet would be great. That's where I've had them for years, is about 15 feet.
Let me jump in a little bit here, just for clarification. And about, kind of sort of, put your thumb up, it doesn't happen like that. When a variance is granted, it is as specific as you possibly can get it.
Okay.
It's not going to be by millimeters or inches.
Yeah.
But if you say, "I kind of want it over there," it makes it difficult for the record...
Sure.
...or filing, or the code enforcement officer to figure out whether or not you're in compliance with the granting of the variance.
Okay.
So, the kind of sort it, put your thumb, that's not going to work.
Sure.
That's why he's asking you that question.
Okay. All right, so 15 feet would be my, would be my request.
Adam, is he going to need another variance for that if he's looking for 15 feet, in addition to the five variances that he's looking for?
Yes, I would have to recount how I figured all this, because it was very, there was a lot that was going on there. So, I mentioned in my initial comments that if it was to be less than 35 feet, an initial, or an additional variance would be required, and I can't remember if that was part of the five or not. So let me just...
For each flag. So he needs two separate variances for each flag.
There's only one flag, but he wants to switch the flags out. So one day it might say "we buy gold," the next day "we buy silver."
Yes, so to allow a flag that doesn't say the word "open" is one variance. If it's closer than 35 feet, that's a second variance.
Want us to wait a little bit while you're looking at them, or proceed?
Yeah, this is the exact same reason why I'd ask the applicant, just bring us a list, a concise, here are the, you know, variances that we, that we require.
I thought it was already in there, that's my confusion, I don't, I haven't changed anything from the last time I was here.
Just like you said, you did, you said 15 feet, right? When you came in here last time, it was, wasn't sure, right? As much as you can give me.
Well, yeah, and then after that, then Adam came out, marked the spot, which was another 20 feet further.
That was after the meeting, I mean...
It was, so the last meeting, I wasn't aware it was going to be that far back either. I thought I had it, I thought I had it to where I, where I, you know, needed it.
It'd be those two for the flag. It would be 165-6H, which is a tension-getting device, like a non-governmental flag. So, a flag that says "open" is permitted. Okay, so we're not going to, the variance wouldn't be for that section of the code, it would be for the section of code that doesn't allow things such as non-governmental flags, which would be any flag that doesn't say "open."
So your understanding is that if he has four flags, one for gold, one for silver, one for coin, one for jewelry, a variance for each one of those?
No.
What's your understanding of, for those four?
It would be a sign that says something other than "open," and then we would have to list, we allow it to be gold, coin, silver, antique.
And you would decide, are we allowing one at a time, two at a time? So if he has four, that he changes out each day, but only ones up at a time?
Which is what I believe he's asked for.
Right.
You haven't asked for two or four, okay.
So that's how the variance would be written, A, non-governmental flag, and then if it's to be closer than 35 feet to the pavement edge, that is code section... Just wrote this down.
That's for the distance?
Yes, that states no freestanding sign, which this would become, requiring a permit shall be closer than 35 feet from the pavement public right of way.
I'm counting five now. Three for the window sign, one for the flag, and one for the distance of the flag.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
What are the three for the window?
One for the, one for open, one for "we buy gold," "silver," "jewelry," and the other is for it being illuminated after business hours.
But isn't the open one allowed?
Sign other than "open." If it said "open," it would be okay.
Right.
Other than "open."
So the sign code allows for a lit sign that says the words "open" only during business hours. The lighting code says that no sign shall be illuminated, no luminance should come from signage in window. So there's a lighting code that needs a variance, and then the sign code is because it doesn't say "open," and then if he wishes to have it outside of business hours, that's the third variance.
Want to add anything before we proceed with questions?
No.
Alexis, do you have questions?
Last time you indicated that you would be okay with not lighting the sign during business hours, or after business hours, just keeping it on when you're open?
I'd be happy to get it, yeah, just to get the sign, but I mean, I would prefer to, you know, the purpose of having it lit overnight is so that, after dark, people, again, drive by and see that, oh, that's what's in there.
You're not withdrawing, it was...
I'm not withdrawing, I'd like to still...
That's what we need to know.
Yeah.
You don't understand the question, this, I don't understand this, and we'll rephrase it.
Okay.
But when a question is being asked, if, again, you say, well, sort of, kind of, I'd like it, mean what you say, say what you mean, yes, I want it, or, no, I'm going to withdraw it, right? Because we're, you understand what we're dealing with.
Trying not to ask for more, too much, I'm trying to be reasonable, and like, you know, I'm thinking, well, maybe if I only ask for this, you know, I have a better chance. So you're saying I should just ask for it all, and then just, you know, it's no less of a chance that I'm going to get it if I ask for five things rather than two?
You can ask for as much as you want, and you put it on paper, but when you move the target around, it makes the board's questions extremely difficult.
We often try, we have to get at, you know, what needs versus wants.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody said you'd be more apt to get this... Sure, if you said I'd be more apt to get this if I didn't ask for that, then I guess that, that was my, I understand what you're saying now.
What I was trying to get you to have today was, I need this.
Okay.
Here's what I need.
Okay.
Like, A, B, C, D, versus, well, jeez, I'd really like this, but you know what, if I can't get this, I want that. You know, like, and then that, that makes it really difficult for us to decide what you really need versus what a want or a nice-to-have is, right?
Okay, okay.
Did I say that all right?
Yeah, no, right, it's the moving target, mean what you say, say what you mean. If you have questions, by all means, ask us, and we'll do the best we can. Same thing with you, just...
I'm going into politics, I got to learn all this, so, I understand.
Okay. Any other questions for now, Alexis? Do you have questions?
We're only now talking about the 24 by 48 flat panel sign in one window, not the...
Correct.
Not the four-sign package.
Correct. I did take pictures, but I didn't, I don't know if it helps to give, give you and show them to you, or...
No, that's okay, I was looking for a picture with putting these superimposed over it, like, kind of what we're used to getting, is here's how it would look.
Yeah.
Right, if we were to put the sign in the window and have the flag out, that type of rendering there.
Okay.
You all set, friend? You have more?
I have more, but I don't know what they are yet.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm not satisfied.
So, when I looked at, I reviewed the minutes, one of the reasons why you ask for all these variances, and to be frank and honest with you, normally someone will come in with one variance, maybe two. When there's five variances that all come in, it raises a lot of concerns that, is this really a good fit for granting variance or variances? I'm figuring it out already, and I'll tell you, they run with the land, so you could be in there for a year and move out, and the new owner of that property gets all of those variances. So it's really not particular to you if you say, well, no one can find me. That's particular to you and your business, whatever business is going to be there. And I hope you're there for years and years and years, and you're very profitable, it's the American dream. But we also have to be concerned about that if, whenever it is that you decide to move along, and whoever else then purchased that property rents it, it runs with the land. So that's why we're so concerned about, what is it that really needs to happen here? So it goes back to, with signage, especially up on 96, we've heard this again and again, we can't be found. We're in the 21st century. Kids taught me, if I can, you know, GPS and all of those other things, you plug that in, if you're locked and loaded, that car will practically drive itself right to your business. So it's really not, for me, I can't speak for the rest of the board, a persuasive argument that my customers can't find me.
Can I add something when you're...
Sure.
There's also, that I know of, I think, three or four businesses are, that are 82 feet from the road. Most businesses are not that far on 96, so that's why these, both of these, is because I have, and you weren't here last time, but I explained that I have multiple people, and even since I moved the flag back 20 feet, this has been, the last couple of weeks have been dead. So you might think that it's not a significant thing, but I'm telling you, I know that it is. And through years of being in there with the martial arts, the flags saved us. So I think without this, in fact, I find out tomorrow, I might be moving here into the village, and so it may not matter, but it's probable. But, at least until I do, then, you know, this is, for me, I think life, it's a game-changer.
To that end, I would hope that a business owner does some marketing strategy, looks at particular properties. I have a friend who is a marketing individual with Wegmans. I've learned so much that they don't put up a store unless they know it's going to deceive.
Absolutely.
They are locked and loaded, that this particular location is going to work. So you telling me that I'm 20, 30, 80 feet, you created that, you walked into that, knowing that whatever business is in there, whether it be martial arts, or your gold and jewelry business, whatever it is...
Well, I could add also that for years, since I moved in there, I've been putting those flags 10 feet from the road, and nothing, nobody ever said anything. So that was a big part of me, from the day one that I moved in there, those flags have been out there, and closer, much closer than they are even recently. And that's nobody's fault, it's just, but it was my understanding that that was okay. And with that premise, I continued to lease the building, and was pretty successful until COVID.
So is it your argument that if you do it, if you get your hand in the cookie jar, you don't get caught, it's okay?
No, not at all. I didn't know that I was, I didn't know that I was in violation of any code.
I completely missed your point then, and you had the flags out there, and no one said anything. How is it different than what I just described, when the adage, you put your hand in the cookie jar, if you don't get caught, it doesn't matter? So you're telling me, you put the flags out there, no one said anything, so it must have been okay?
No, I put the flags out there because I, my understanding was that that was where they could be. And I had talked to previous, it wasn't Adam, but previous Sean, I think it was, and there was no issue, so...
And what is the, when you want to know what the rule is, where do you go? You open up the book and you read it.
Mm-hmm.
Did you ever read the code about that particular issue? At the library, you come here, and...
We're going back four years, but probably, yeah. I would not do it, I would not, I can tell you, if you don't know me, but I would not have done it had I known that it was a violation, no.
I'm not quite sure what your point is, other than you didn't know, and that was okay. And that really isn't a good argument.
Well, I'm saying I didn't, I, I believe that I was, I was in the right to put them where I, where I did, not that I didn't know.
All right.
It's all hearsay anyways, doesn't matter at this point.
There we go. So you're aware the county planning board took a look, because it's on Route 96, and their recommendation, basically, was no action, but they do have concerns about signage on 96. Did you review that at all, take a look at it?
I'm sorry, who?
County Planning Board. You don't know?
Other than the emails that I've gotten, which I've, which I've read everything, I'm trying to, I'm not following you.
There are certain situations when the county planning board is required to be notified of a municipality's, or I should say, an applicant's desire for a variance. We're required to refer that application to the county planning board.
Okay.
And we're required to wait for their advisory opinion on what to do with it. It could be approval, it could be denial, just maybe we have to listen to them.
Sure.
They have certain comments, and in this particular case, while they didn't recommend a denial, they did have comments raising concerns about, like, they have signage that is on the corridor, on 96 corridor. But just those concerns raise our concerns. The intent of the code, the comprehensive plan is specific, again, to Route 96, that if you just allow all of these signage, and allow the businesses to say, they can't find me, I need help, the signage is really the catalyst to me having a successful business. 96 would be loaded with signs.
But isn't that the purpose of these meetings, is to find out what exceptions are okay, what exceptions make sense? I mean, if I get this exception, does that mean everybody else can do what I'm doing? Or is it just the person who's in that building at that spot?
And so the second part of your question, first, no, just because you, or an applicant is awarded a variance, doesn't mean that his or her neighbor gets one.
Okay.
Properties are very unique, specific, so your request, granted or denied, may not be your neighbor's.
Okay.
Right? But what is important here is there's criteria, criteria on whether or not a variance can be granted. You should have seen it, because I think you filled it out, your response to those questions is whether or not there would be a change in the character of the neighborhood, whether or not it can be achieved by some other method, whether or not it's substantial, whether or not it's going to have an environmental impact, and whether or not the alleged difficulty is self-created. Working backwards, you created this, right? So this request for a variance is, the difficulty is, that's on you. There really isn't any environmental impact on flags and signs. Arguably, though, there is a dark sky compliant, but I don't think your sign in the window is going to create a big problem. The first three, though, are, the, whether or not it would change the overall character of the neighborhood. It's a bit of a balancing test, is your need to say, I want to sign, signs help my business, people can't find me, as opposed to, is, what kind of impact is that going to have in that neighborhood, in that area? The second one is whether or not you can achieve what you're asking for by some other means, some feasible means that is compliant with the code. Or, if, another way to look at it, how much do you really need? You're looking at five variances, do you need all five, is it four, three? Do you, do the signs need to be 10 feet, 15, 30? All those things need to be evaluated, and whether or not the variance is substantial. So in my opinion, the request for variances, five of them, is substantial. When you're asking for that many, it's, to me, it's inherently, it's a substantial ask, that's a big ask. So that's why Matt was trying to drive it. How much do you really need here? Because if it's an all-or-nothing thing, you may not like the answer that you got.
That was my understanding, is to come in and ask for more than one thing, and maybe I'll get one or two of them, not all or nothing. I didn't come in here with the attitude of all or nothing, however, if I get, if I come in here with one, and that's denied, then I've gotten no further.
It certainly could, but if you...
And the flag was my first priority, I said that last time, because I, you weren't here last time, but...
For that, you've said it a couple, I've read the minutes, I'm thorough with it, I got it, so...
I was not doing well without those flags. That was, that was pretty consistent.
And you're basing that just on your customer traffic?
The fact that people called me constantly, saying, we can't find you. And that was with a bigger sign, which the East Side Martial Arts is bigger than my, the East Side Gold sign, and people still couldn't find me. And when I put those flags out, that was the game changer. And the fact that I ask people, when they come in now, how, how did you hear about us? They say, oh, we saw your flags. 75% of them, and I've been keeping track, and it's not from the $2,000 I'm spending a month on advertising. That helps, but my best advertising is those signs, and I've been asking countless people...
Truck out there with the advertising on the truck as well.
Well, that was a $40,000, once we stopped using it, it sat out there, and it was a great sign, but it was a $40,000 sign, so, if I could do that again, I would, because that, that was obviously better than, than anything I'm asking, but...
Matt, you have any other questions you want to ask?
No, I, I mean, there really isn't, isn't too much new. I think we were trying to get at last time, as well, was our, is there, is there one variance, is there one thing here that if you got, it would be your game changer? And I know we talked about, and that's why he started with saying, he, trying to find a flag that maybe just said gold, or just was a little different. At least me personally, I thought the signage, and the signs that we had presented, the whole "we buy gold" thing is very pawn shoppy, and really wasn't within the kind of character of the neighborhood, and that, you know, kind of gave them an opportunity to say, if you can go and, and... and that, you know, kind of gave them an opportunity to say, "If you can go and, and create one flag, because that seemed to be, have the most impact, what would it look like? And where would you want to put it?" And it sounds like you'd want to put it 15 feet from the road and it'd have to say, "We buy gold," or it'd have to be one of those kinds of...
Yeah, that's not a pawn shop. A pawn shop is, sorry.
Pawn shop, ask, I mean, I get it, like it's, when I, when I, when I go to places and I see pawn shop, there's always a "we buy gold" sign. There's always a, I'm sorry, it's just, it's just, in my opinion, I'm only one vote here, but that's kind of the aura that the whole "we buy gold" thing, you know, carries with it. And so I just personally don't think it's kind of within the character to pepper the front of that building with, "We buy gold, we buy silver, we buy antiques," you know? I, I'm not sure, again, it was like the, I forgot the ads for a long time. I won't go down that route. But it, it just, it just felt like it'd cheapen your brand with that, with the building and everything there, and it just wasn't a fit.
When I first came in to ask for this, I specifically said, "I'm not a pawn shop. I'm not going to buy electronics, gift cards, video games. I'm not going to put people's things in." That's what a pawn shop is.
But you also said, because I remember I quoted you, was you weren't going to come back in front of the zoning board asking for a lot of, I think it was either crazy or weird.
You're right, before I found out, before I found out that I didn't have the flags, yeah.
And all that other stuff.
That was before I found out that I couldn't have the flags too, so.
Right, but now you're also here, you want the lit up signs, you want the signs that say, I thought there was also a size issue with the signs as well, or the signs are okay in terms of the square footage of the building and all that. Okay. So it just seems like a lot, whether it's, whether it's not a fit or not. I was open to, like, one thing, whether it was just like one flag, this particular design, this is what it would say, placed, I don't know, 15, 20, whatever your recommendation was. I was open to that. I'm not a fan of...
I really did look for those, anything else that said, "We buy gold." I'm, you can go online too and look, and there really is nothing. I spent at least three hours various times going through from everything, and I'm good at searching stuff on the internet.
And so what if, what if you just had an open sign? And it was a little close, like, is there anything that would, it would be your 80%, 90% solution for you?
Well, the, you know, the light box sign is...
You've got that lit right now, it says, "We buy gold."
You're right.
It's lit up. I drive by it and I look at it, "You buy gold. I know what you buy. You buy gold." So what if it was an open sign? What if you had an open flag or something?
If nothing else, if I had the open sign and the open flag sign and could put it 15 feet from the road, I guess that would be my, better than nothing.
That was the only variance you'd have.
That was the only...
If that was all you wanted, I'd be okay with that personally. That's it.
But the "we buy gold"...
I'm not a fan of the, you've already got a "we buy gold" thing, and it's lit up. It's there, right?
Yeah.
So...
I did find a "we buy coins."
And I know you're, it's a, maybe it's a blessing and a curse, you're below grade, right?
So it's not a...
But when I look, you can see it. That makes your sign almost at grade from the road.
The flat, the trees that we have, that we can't take down, prevent anybody from seeing us until they drive by us going 60 miles an hour, so.
Well, I get that, but every business has that, I mean, every business is in the same, is in the same case.
Yeah.
The, personally, I don't think the trees impacted, impacted that much. We've heard from others in that neighborhood too, about it on the other side of the trees. But again, if you were to, if you, if you said that that was what it really took was to get an open flag 15 feet from the road, I personally would be okay with that variance if that, you thought that would have an impact for you. But a lot of the whole "we buy gold" thing and "we buy all the site," I'm just not a fan.
If I, if I had one made that said silver or gold, or, I mean, what are you, you, sorry, what are you looking for?
I'd be open to hearing what everyone else says, if there was a particular design or, or something that we...
If I knew I could have it, I would be willing to pay extra, to pay 400, 500 hours to do it.
I was hoping you were going to come here with something.
Well, yeah.
That was, that was the ask, right?
Yeah.
Show up with one flag design that we could all talk and debate about.
They won't do that for me until I pay them for it.
I know, but you could have just written it on a piece of paper and said, "I wanted to say this word."
I'm a perfectionist, so, yeah.
And we could do it, but that's...
Can I ask a question? You know, when you said earlier that they, you'd have to buy the flag, that they, they wouldn't, you'd have to buy it before they'd make it up. But wouldn't they even just give you a drawing, a rendering?
I asked them.
I can't believe that they, that not one...
This is mobile graphics. They wouldn't, I'm paying them $60 an hour to design it and to create, and to print it. They won't do anything until I pay them something.
But, but you're paying them to, to design it. That's one cost. But they don't, after they design it, they don't even give it to you to look at, to see if you like it. You might want to change that design, and then you pay them another, you know, maybe $60 for another hour, two hours of work. But, but I find that hard to believe that any of these graphic designers are not at least going to give you a copy, even if it's black and white, just to show you what it looks like, because what you're telling me is they're telling you, you have to buy it blind.
I do. No, I have to pay them before they'll put any, any time into it. Why would I do that if I don't even know what, what, what anybody wants?
Yeah, agreed. It's just, I, I find that hard to believe.
That's the name of the game, right? We have people come in front of us that have paid people to put a design in front of us. I had to come in front of this board many years ago. I had to pay a civil engineer to, to put a drawing together, $1,100 to get 18 inches on a, on a multi-sport court in my, in my backyard. It's, it's...
I'm just frustrated because I already spent $500 on these flags as it is now.
Stop, stop him in it. And if you keep doing it, we've asked you. Don't talk over each other. It's creating a mess of a record, right? Let him finish talking, and I promise you, he'll let you talk, and we won't talk over you.
Okay.
All right, so...
So I was just, I was just saying, there isn't, there's no zero cost game here. You've, you've got to, the applicants that, in my, in my experience here, that have the best chance of success are the ones that invested a little bit in their project and have the data to kind of put in front of us and show, "This is what I want." And yeah, it costs them, sometimes it costs them tens of thousands of dollars to put, if not more, to put drawings and documents in front of us. That, that's the name of the game. I'm sorry, but that's...
Well, I also, I also, it was my understanding that the flags were an Ontario County thing, and I had not much chance of changing that, so that was the idea of having the LED or the light box sign, was that I had a better chance of doing that. So the idea was to come in here with, you know, multiple options, not to confuse anybody, but, so.
All right.
Is there any way to find out what everybody would be okay with?
That's what I'm doing, because I get the sense that you're either getting one or the other. You're not getting both.
I understand that.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
What I'm going to ask is if the board, little straw poll, if they are willing to grant either the flag variance, those pieces, or the pieces that relate to the window box sign.
Okay.
All right, so I think that's going to clear up a lot of things. What I'm gathering here is what you're asking for doesn't make any sense. If you want it all, you're not going to get it. Fred, are you of the mindset that it's one or the other, or it's something different?
I could live with the flag option.
Okay. Leah, one or the other, and which one?
The, the flag option, because the others are just too confusing.
Okay. Alexis, what do you think?
I have a question for you.
Oh, sure, sure.
You mentioned that you were looking to move your business into the village. Is that based on what we decide here tonight?
No, no, I just found out this weekend that the jeweler up here is trying to, we're meeting with them tomorrow. So I literally just found out about this last week.
Since the variance goes with the land, I would just be, in my opinion, cautious to grant a variance. You know, you move and then someone else comes in. It's not you. It's based on whoever, you know, the next person is.
Sure.
You come here, we know you, we, you know, have talked with you.
Well, I'm staying in, sure. The martial arts is staying in there, and that, that'll use that space, so it's, somebody's not coming in there.
When will you know?
The gold.
Hopefully tomorrow, but, I mean, we're, this is just the negotiations and, you know, but like what they're looking for. And then, of course, I have to go before the village and...
Let's, let's hold that thought a second.
Yeah, I feel like we always have that with every applicant. It might be tomorrow, it might be next year, it might be 10 years. And that's why we debate this so much. Yeah, that's why often we debate this so much, because we have to look, whether it's tomorrow or a year or whatever, it runs with the land and there's implications, or that's why we try to be as specific as possible.
Is it the same board for Village? Are you guys...
No, 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 no.
No, okay.
And it's a different code, so...
Sure.
Please don't assume and...
I already called. I called and asked, like, what's allowed and, yeah.
I'm highly recommending for you, either go to the village, go to the library, open up the book and read the code, so you understand it.
I already talked to the code enforcer.
Okay, do what you will, do what you want. So we have a new option, I think, I like, at least I thought that's where Alexis was going. Would you be opening to, open to table the issue? Because the next time we come back, you'll have a decision on whether or not you're going to move to the village. That would clear a lot of things up for us. If you don't, I think you're getting the flavor that it's one or the other. And when you come back, make it as clear as you can, "I really want to have the window box." "I really want the flags," and...
But the flags, obviously, what's, is what everybody, including you, are saying is the, the better of the two.
It's going to clear things up a lot, because asking for both, I don't think it's going to happen.
No.
Because you're, you are trying to get two of your problems solved with the same thing. It's almost like an overkill.
Sure.
So if we now, if we're looking at the flags, that is a much more manageable issue to handle, and then apply to the criteria. And I think you're hearing from the board that, don't make any promises, because everyone's going to vote. That that's going to be a much more manageable issue to deal with.
So what would the next step be then?
You would table it. The next meeting is when?
May 1st is the next meeting, and I think it would be beneficial if you sent pictures beforehand. That way they can all see everything.
We weren't going to come to a conclusion tonight, regardless. This wasn't a decision.
No, 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 we were about ready to make a decision, and Alexis, and I think rightfully pointed out that you have a new wrinkle in your business plan, that you might be moving to the village and all this gold and silver business.
Couldn't it be contingent upon, yes, but if you don't move?
No, we're not doing that.
Can't do that.
No, I didn't say we can't, but we've made contingencies before, but this is already a complicated issue. And you having five variances in play make it even more complicated. We're trying to simplify it for the board as well as you, on if the variance is granted, it runs with the land. And to Alexis's point, that if you move in two weeks and we've granted the variances as they relate to the flag, what's the point? To what end? It's that the new owner now is going to say, "Oh, I, I get flags," or...
Well, it's, it's not going to be in two weeks. It's going to be probably, I mean, to, I obviously have to go before them. In the meantime, even if it is, you know, I'd like to be able to use the flag. And again, nobody's, that I know of, is moving into that spot, because I'm going to be using it for birthday parties or something, if I do move out. In other words, the karate school was using it before and will continue to use it if I'm, if I'm not.
I understand that you're, you're staying on the karate building, but you're also now telling us that your business could be moved, and the issue or issues you have with, "Nobody can find me and I need those flags," is moot.
Well, I would, no, I would still use it for, you know, for the martial arts. I mean, I would still, even if, even if it's, I have Nerf ones that I could put up.
No, but that's the, the point, is that what we're saying is, if, if it gets approved, it could only say, "We buy gold."
Okay, or open, or open.
So that's, well, that, that's what I was recommending was, if, again, you have a lit up sign that says, "We buy gold." It's right, and that's lit up its exterior, because it's not a window sign. It's lit up and it says, "We buy gold," right? When you're, even outside of business hours, I believe. What I was open to was only one variance that just said you could put the open flag 15 feet instead of 35, that particular one. If that was what your, like, 80% solution would be. And then that would be something that could make sense with East Side Martial Arts or whomever goes in that building in perpetuity, because it wouldn't be just a gold or "we buy gold." Again, I'm just one vote up here, you know, I've heard two, two evenings of this, and it, it comes across that, you know, that you really want the flags over the other window signs. I know you want everything, but at the end of the day, you said, your stories are all around the people seeing the flags and then finding where you are. They see the flag. Trust me, you can't miss the "we buy gold" sign. You don't miss it. I don't think they miss it. Maybe the open sign helps draw their attention or something to that effect, but that's just my opinion.
Was everybody open to the same, only saying open? Or could it, could it be something that, that if I had designed or that even the, you know, "we buy gold"? Is everybody opposed to the "we buy gold" if it's, if it is the flag?
You're moving the target again.
No, I'm not, actually. He's the only one that said that, but they didn't say when they said the flag was okay.
Yeah, I, I, I brought that up. I, it's, I don't know everybody's opinion on the, whether they like the "we buy gold" or silver or not, but I, my opinion is that I don't, I personally don't like the "we buy gold" silver stuff. I prefer open. And you've already got a "we buy gold" sign and it's lit up. It's on the building. I mean, we, that's again why I wanted the picture, like, could have just taken this shot from Google Earth and we could have just cut and pasted in these windows and with the flag there. And in probably about three minutes, you'd see that you were going to have a "we buy gold" sign lit up. Then you were going to have four or five signs in the window originally, with the vertical columns and then the other column. And then you were going to have the flags in front of it. And it was, and it's just, my opinion, it would show that it's just too much. Again, my opinion, the "we buy gold" sign, that's already there. It's lit up. It's allowed, and, you know, what we can do to help balance it is maybe let you get an open sign, you know, back to where it was 15 feet, where you had it before. Just because I don't, I don't, there isn't, the current design that's proposed, I'm not in favor of that.
But it sounds like, Mr. Hutchins, even if you do move your business to the village, you are still looking for the variance, because it won't be, you know, you won't be moving it tomorrow. You'll still be in the, you know, the location on 96.
Still going to be stuck there for, yeah, for however long it takes to, if, that's if everything is approved by the village and, you know.
So would you still like us to, to take a vote tonight?
I would.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Anyone from the audience want to speak for or against the application? Anything, Suzie? Okay. So what I like to do is, is treat the variances, I say, we can't do them all at once, we can't bundle it. I see that really as two categories. The variances that relate to the flag, that really are, it's the flag and the distance. And then the other set of variances that deal with the window box on the storefront. I think we...
And the hours.
And the hours.
Over into the evening.
The hours lighting up the signs in the window.
Right, but that, right, that relates to the, the window sign.
The light box, yeah.
Right, the light box. So what I gather from the board, it's one or the other. So going through the flag variance first is probably then going to trigger the opposite, a denial for everything that you're asking for, for that window box.
Sure, I agree. I understand.
All right. Is the board comfortable with that? If we go that way, with the flags first, flag first?
As proposed, 15 feet from the road?
As proposed, 15 feet from the road. Okay, we're good with that? So for the resolution for the flag...
Just for clarification, writing this, is this four different flags that we're switching out every day that say, "We buy gold, we buy silver, we buy coin, we buy..."
Antiques.
Whatever.
Jewelry, jewelry coins.
No, it's just, it's just gold and silver. That's it. There's two that say, there's two that say... There's two that say, there's two that say, we buy silver.
One out a day.
One out a day. Yeah, two silver, two gold, one, one per day.
And do you move that business in specific to those flags? You can change it to Nerf fours and martial arts.
Okay.
So.
So is he allowed to change it to open, which is allowed by the code? Or would the distance on, distance of the sign of the flag only be for one that says, does not say open?
Adam, on the, on the flag.
The flag is permitted to say open.
Open.
So a variance would imply, don't, at that point, only the distance from the road would apply. So I don't know if you need to separate the actual resolutions or if there's a way to word it. The open will always be permitted. It just can't be permitted closer to 35 feet. So if you're going to do the reduction in distance and only pertain it to the silver and gold signs, then if it's an open sign, it would not be allowed to be 15 feet from the road.
So he would need, the variance needs to read 15 feet or gold, silver, gold or silver or open.
Correct.
Okay, the board good with that? Okay. Amber, good? All right. So an undesirable change would not be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties by creating, by, created by granting of the area variance in specific to the flag. Uh, that could only read gold or silver or open.
Is it we buy gold? Are you okay with it? So that's, that was what was, what do you, so as proposed, that's what's going there?
Right, that's we, those words, we buy.
Buy gold.
All right, so to continue. Would not be, an undesirable change would not be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of area variance. Justification being uh, that uh, one flag with the terminology is stated and 15 feet. The applicant has stated that there has been some difficulty uh, with customers locating uh, his business. And also due to the fact that his business uh, structure is, I'm sorry, what'd you say? How far off the road?
My understanding is 82 feet.
Approximately uh, 82 feet. Would anyone like to add anything else for the uh, first criteria? Benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to other than an area variance. And I think the same justification for the first criteria would apply for the second criteria. Would anyone like to add anything to the second criteria? Third, the requested area variance uh, is not substantial. One flag 15 feet from the road with uh, the specific language is stated in the first uh, criteria. Would anyone like to add anything for the third criteria? Fourth, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Uh, we haven't heard anything or any evidence that would show that the flag in and of itself would create any kind of environmental uh, conditions in the neighborhood or district. If the alleged difficulty is self-created. We have, we had one letter from uh, yeah, Dr. Cortella that uh, supported the request for variance. Anything else? Any conditions to add to this? And the.
With the language, obviously, the language of the.
No, it doesn't need to be a condition, sorry. Uh, also if we can incorporate the comments from the county planning board. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Uh, I'm sorry, I did have it. It was in my comments. I was trying to find the right page.
Go ahead.
I requested that if it was approved, there was a condition uh, that the flag remain in good condition at all times based on the signed code, section 165 six under prohibited signs. It says illegible, illegible signs and signs in disrepair. It specifies that they can be removed by the code officer. So just so you're aware, I was requesting as a condition that it must remain in good condition.
That's in the code itself?
Yes.
Okay, so that. Don't assume anything. Read the code. It needs to stay in, in proper condition pursuant to the language of the code. Right, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I make that motion.
Thank you Fred, a second. Anyone? I'll second it. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No, no.
All right. So there was.
Three.
Three noes?
Three noes.
Okay. So we will then take a look at then the requested variance, variances for the uh, window box uh, issue. That uh, it will read I guess others, anything other than, than open. Uh, this would be the, what, we buy gold? Is that what's up there is now?
No, Suzie, could you?
If you go back one slide, I think.
I apologize again for clarification. That was denied.
That was a denial, correct. Suzie?
Oh, can you go back one slide? Might be one or two.
Yeah.
So the sign in the lower right-hand corner?
Yeah.
That's what you currently have now or that's what you're asking for?
He's asking for, originally he's asking for both of those signs.
Either one of those.
Or either one.
You're looking for the, the top one, I believe, correct? No, the bottom one?
The bottom right. He wants the bottom right one.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the variance, the variances that relate to the um, bottom right sign. And that would be language that states something other than open as indicated. That's currently on the uh, display. We buy gold, silver, coins, jewelry. Top dollar, I can't read that. What's under that? Top dollar what? Top dollar paid. Uh, and uh, the sign to be illuminated after business hours. You're still staying with that after business hours to be illuminated? I'm asking you.
Yeah.
If it's all in one.
If it's, uh, yeah.
Okay. So any other further discussion then on, before we go through the resolution on uh, the rest of the variances? All right, so um, first criteria. An undesirable change uh, would not be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of an area variance. We can use the same language that we used with the flag. But in addition, that the board has decided to deny variance, variances that are related to the um, flag proposal. Would anyone like to add anything to the first criteria? All right, um, same thing with the second. Same language, uh, but additional language that uh, indicates that the um, variances that related to the flag uh, were denied. Anyone, anybody want anything to the second criteria? Third, uh, the area variance is not substantial. Same language is what we use for the flag uh, proposed variance. And also add that the flag variance was uh, denied. Fourth, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Uh, there's been no evidence that indicate that all the variances that relate to the proposed sign in the window have anything uh, relative having, to, to having an adverse of impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood? Anyone want to add anything to the fourth? Fifth, the alleged difficulty uh, is self-created. Any proposed conditions for that variance relating to the uh, window box? None. I would entertain a motion for approval. All right, we're not getting any, so that's, uh, they're looking at a denial, so all those, I would entertain a motion for uh, denial for the window, all the variances related to the window box. Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Carrie? You oppose it? All right. So both sets of variances were denied.
There, there any, so there's nothing to do at this point? I mean, there's no, like, if I come back and say, all right, I'll just put up one that says uh.
Okay, now what's your, what you're, I think what you're driving.
For the flag.
What's your next step?
Yeah.
Uh, we can't give legal advice. So our best suggestion for you is.
Other than running, running, running to get this job maybe because these codes are, when did codes become more important than businesses? I, I, this is kind of ludicrous to me.
You have, you're entitled to your opinion.
I am.
And you can speak with counsel and sort through your remedies for the next step if you want to take those next steps.
All right, so there's nothing more to do tonight then? Okay, thank you.
All right, have a good night. All right, so let's uh, circle back to the Valentine. Anyone here for Valentine? I know Mr. Snyder is. Are those your folks?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
We've lost them along the way.
Yes, I know. You were here last time, but they weren't. So um, let's go back. So it's, it's, I appreciate your patience. So with Valentine, um, we're going to do a uh, review. There was some other materials that were sent. And Suzie has them up. We'll get to those in just a second. Valentine and Mr. Rinaldi had requested five variances and they all relate to uh, a second monument sign. There's already one monument sign on that parcel and that would be the chase sign. We're asking for a second monument sign. The first, I think this dates all the way back to, I want to say November. Bear with me just a second.
It's like November 21st.
Yep, so uh, it was um, November and then December. We had a meeting in January. Uh, it was tabled in February. So it's, it's been reviewed a number of times. Uh, their argument, the applicant's argument was for the most, it was need-based. Uh, that they were suggesting that uh, they need those signs because customers can't find uh, the building. Uh, or the particular businesses. There are, the county planning board uh, denied, recommended denial. The new information that um, the Valentine applicant submitted suggested there was a public safety issue if they were uh, to put the monument sign um, on their lot and the use for the high street uh, entrance exit. Uh, it's unfortunate that they're not here. Some of the questions I would have asked them is how is it that they found, or their opinion that there was a public safety issue? I don't know if any report has been made to, whether it be department of transportation, the county, the town. Is it an uh, a layman's opinion? It's an expert opinion? Have they ever contacted law enforcement? So in my eyes, suggesting that there's a public safety issue that should they put a monument sign as the code permits, um, doesn't hold any weight with me. Uh, I know, again, Mr. Snyder, you were here uh, before. Are there new comments or is it pretty much the same on your opposition on why they shouldn't have that sign there?
I'd like to respond to their letter of January 24th, even after that last.
Okay, come on up. So is it something different than what you've said before?
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. My name's Martin Snyder. I'm uh, part owner of 304 High Street with my parents, which is the, on the southern boundary of the Valentine Plaza lot. And as I mentioned, I'd just like to respond to that letter of January 24th that the applicant submitted. They answered the, what is 25 questions at this point? Five times five for the five variances. Uh, and one of the main things that they kept bringing up was references to Walmart Plaza has it, the Hampton Inn Plaza, they have these signs. Uh, but I'd like to draw that right back to what the county planning board has said, and I don't want to waste your time going through that, but um, all those different points of it being um, the signage being excessive, um, it not, uh, that the town code is, already has what's needed for business identification. It's all already been addressed. The one unique thing about this site that we're looking at is that we have historic area versus all these other applications and all these other places you're talking about, they're not in these historic areas. We have Valentine Hall, Schoolhouse Number Seven, which has been there since, off the top of my head, 1845. The Bone Steel House, which has been there since, off the top of my head, the 1830s. This is all very unique to this area versus all these other places that they've cited, and this is very unique. Historical combination along with the business that I think should be considered. And the one thing I, I have to say once again, that I did say in the previous meeting, that I think a sixth variance is needed. I don't understand how we can get this separate monument sign on that lot where 165 5B1 states that one freestanding monument building identification sign may be installed, which identifies in, I won't even go on to the whole thing. I don't want to waste your time, but we have two lots at front 96. One has a chase sign, one has a Longhorn sign on it. I don't know where we can squeeze another sign in there. And on top of that, the sign that the applicant said back at the January meeting that was going to be removed, that's been there since 2015, that's still there. Uh, once again, it's another time when he's gone back on his word. He's given you his word, he's going to do something. It hasn't happened. It's still there. It's still there this afternoon. Going back to the five variances, I think we all agree in this room tonight from what has been said, that that is excessive. I did reach out to the department of state and if there's any question onto how many variances we have on the table, each of those different elements that we're looking at in 165 5B1, those are all separate variances. It can't be all grouped together to say, oh, it's four, it's three, because they're all in the same paragraph. We have five variances at least, if not the six, to try to get that extra sign on the site. And just to summarize, I just hope a decision is made tonight. Uh, we stood up at the last meeting, everyone. We had all sorts of folks from our neighborhood come. No applicant. Uh, I guess he did contact the board prior. Uh, I contacted the planning office at 3:30 this afternoon. Nothing was said about, uh, the applicant did not contact the office. He's playing us. He's wasting our time. We have people coming out. I'm leaving my son's baseball game early to get here. I hope he can make a decision tonight and just put this to bed. And if I can clarify anything that I said, I'd be glad to, uh, with the number of variances needed. Anything, uh, since the applicant is not here to say anything. I just, anything you need from me, I'd be glad to clarify anything else that's needed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public want to speak for against the application?
George Snyder, owner of 304 High Street, right next door. And one point to put out here, just common sense. The property he's advertising for is not owned by the property that he's putting the sign on. Whereas his comparison to Walmart, they own their whole plazas, so they can put a sign out there for what's in the plaza. The other thing is, he's wanting to advertise 300 High Street. Go by there. There's no verification on that building that says 300. Go by there, there's no verification on that building that says 300 High Street. When I remount my house, I could not move on the property until it said high street number on the property. Now he's advertising something that's not even marked. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Susie? Fred, comments, concerns?
Well, we turned down a very similar application with the Dr. Cotella building application they wanted for, and it's shown. We turned that down. How can we approve this without going back to... ...supposed to treat everybody the same? So I'm, when they had the big sign up there for a while, I thought, well, that's terrible. They made it smaller, but I still don't think they've done very much to identify the buildings. They're back there, they don't have any frontage, that's their problem. Kind of knew that right from the day the drawings were made. But I'm not in favor of it.
Matt?
Um, no, I'm also not in favor of it. I think there are things that can be done to clean up the signage in that area. You know, we talked about trying to bring, you know, the two signs down to one, you know, they, they have not proposed that. They've got the complication of advertising on one lot for a business on another, which further complicates it, so I'm, I continue to be not in favor of it. I think if they...
Matt, are you talking about moving the sign into the Longhorn?
Well, when, when, when they were here the first time, my comment was, well, you bring down the new Chase sign, you bring down the Longhorn sign, and maybe you could have one monuments have the whole thing, but it also doesn't get them through the, the issue we have with a lot of requests that are trying to advertise for signage from different lots. We, you know, we, we've been very strict on that and not allowing that, because then you get into, you know, one lot paying another one to advertise for signage on, on theirs, so I don't, I don't see a path for this to be, to support it with what I know today.
Alexis?
I think with our applicant not here, I personally don't feel comfortable voting, but I know this has gone on for months and months and months.
Leah?
I think being that this dragged on for so, so many months now, and that the applicant isn't here, doesn't give the board the courtesy to come and to give the courtesy to the neighbors to be here to discuss this, I think we should vote on it, and, and I want to say the sign looks tacky. I, I just don't like it. All the other signs, even the ones that predated the code, they, they look a lot better. But also, at one, at one of the previous meetings, the applicant did say, without the signs, they don't, you know, they're, they're not doing the business they could, they're losing business. Well, I drive past there to get, get home every day, and the restaurant is always crowded, the parking lot is jam-packed, and they're not, they're not going to the Chase Bank, the Chase Bank is empty, and I do even see people in and out the other stores. So I don't, I don't agree that they're losing business. And I do agree, Mr. Snyder, with what you said, it's a historical area, and this type of sign would really detract from it.
A quick question, Adam. The Longhorn sign, is that on the same lot as the Chase sign?
No.
Okay. A few notes that I would also like to make, as far as advertising goes, and the need that the applicant continually states, that I've driven by that parcel so many times, and there is a, a van, it says New York Beer Project, it sits there, and they are getting more advertising than they, than they could ever want. You can see New York Beer Project on the, the side of the building, whether you go north or south on 96. The other part that's very concerning to me, and I think Matt alluded to it, is to even suggest an opportunity for an applicant to place a sign on another parcel is certainly going to erode the intent of the code and potentially create bigger problems that, in essence, that anyone then can argue, say, well, gee, I don't have frontage on Route 96, so therefore I'm going to lease out or borrow or put a sign on somebody else's property, and now the signage issue gets even further out of control. They do have alternatives, they have an option of placing a monument sign on their lot. This would be lot, it's Lot 3, is that right, Adam? Yeah, so they could put it on Lot 3. Putting multiple monument signs on one lot is substantial. And I say, indicated earlier, just to make sure it's clear in the record, their argument that there's a public safety issue, that should they put a monument sign at the High Street entrance, is completely unsupported, and I echo, I think, with Fred and Matt and as well as Leah, they're not here, they've been given opportunities. The board or the public should not have to continually wait and wait and wait to make a decision. I don't think they're going to say anything else. We can't force them to be there here. They had their opportunity to be heard, and they chose to not show up. So if there's any other comments or questions from the board, I will continue on with the resolution. First, an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of an area variance. One being is that their attempt to place a monument sign on a parcel that's not theirs, and what I mean theirs, meaning Lot 1, when they have an opportunity to place a monument sign on Lot 3. There's also currently a monument sign, so in addition to, in addition was previously stated, that having two monument signs on one lot would certainly change the character of the neighborhood. County Planning Board has recommended a denial. There have been four who spoke against the application, and I'm going back to previous minutes. The applicant has also indicated for all of the criteria that they need an additional signage, and my review of all the criteria, there's nothing in any of the criteria where need is an element. Would anyone like to add anything to the first criteria? Hearing none. The benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Without question, the applicant has an opportunity to put a monument sign on Lot 3, which is where New York Beer Project and the other businesses are. Would anyone like to add anything on the second criteria? Third, the requested area variance is substantial. The fact that they're asking for a second monument sign on one lot is inherently and clearly substantial. Would anyone like to add anything for the third criteria? Fourth, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. Second monument sign, I haven't heard any evidence that it's going to create any adverse effect on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. Any addition for the fourth criteria? If the alleged difficulty is self-created, simply asking for a second monument sign is a self-created problem. Any additions or conditions or anything else to add for the proposed denial for variance? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for denial.
A motion?
Second?
A second.
You all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, it's carried, it's tonight. Thanks for your time and your patience, I appreciate it very much. Valvoline. So you're here second time, right? Matt, you're chair, so you want to summarize a little bit where we are?
Yeah. I, I think it was very straightforward, the presentation that he gave. He's looking for similar hours of operation as what is being done in, in that neighborhood, whether it was the, the car wash, I think it was the, maybe the gas station, and then even behind it. What was it, Monroe? That's right. I think the only thing you, the action he took was to provide a list of services, which you did, we read that, and I think we're ready to comment on that. But I think in general, there was general support for the hours that the applicant had, had requested, unless anyone's got any further questions. I did have, we did have one regarding the list of services, you had tire rotation on there, and the only thing I think of right when I hear tire rotation is the air gun, you know, sound. Is it, is that something you do a lot? Is it...
To be honest, I, I don't know exactly how often that, they do that, that service. You know, obviously, different customers are going to request different things. I don't know the percentages, I think the majority of people that go there would be for the, the oil change, but they do offer some of the other services, mostly fluids, as you've seen there.
Okay, and on the flip side, there aren't any residences within the 500 or 1,000, 1,000 feet. There's going to be a, a car wash behind you, a car wash behind you and in front of you, and you've got the roaring of the thruway in, in 96, what I think would help dampen it. That was the only thing personally that just stood out to me, but I'm, I'm, I'm still continue to be okay with the application.
Want to add anything before we go forward and ask questions?
No, I think, you know, again, good summary. My name's Todd Markovich with APD Engineering, and I think, you know, there's some questions that came up at the last board meeting, and we provided a little bit of additional information, some exhibits, different things to kind of look at. I also know at the last meeting, county had not commented yet. I'm assuming they've commented at this point, so again, here tonight, requesting that variance, and, and would certainly be willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Good. Alexis, questions? Leah?
Just comment. At, at the last meeting, you, you did state that you would be even adding more, more landscaping to what the site is now, and I did look over the drawings, and I did see more landscaping, and also your photos as well. And I also think with that, it might muffle some of the, some of the sounds, if there is tire rotation or anything, you know, that was one of the concerns. So I, I, I think it's going to be an improvement to what the site looks like now, and thank you for providing all, all the information.
Sure, thank you.
That we requested.
Fred?
No, no questions, ready to vote. Almost administratively easy.
It's pretty straightforward, I agree. Anyone from the public want to speak for or against the application? Anyone? No? Good, okay. All right, yes, thank you for providing the additional information. County Planning Board, no, really no action, other than just a suggestion that the town board may want to reconsider amending the code. I, I agree with Matt. The car wash, and there's going to be another car wash, and Burger King's across the street, and so there's a, a number of businesses that I think if there were any kind of tire rotation, looking at your list, would seem to be the most noise that it would cause, and in addition to the additional buffering that seems to, it's in your plan, I think the impact would be minimal. Any comments, concerns before we proceed with the criteria? An undesirable change would not be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the area variance. As indicated, there are a number of businesses in close proximity, and an additional business that, this would be Delta Sonic, that will be in, in your backyard, that any impact for the Sunday hours would be minimal. Would anyone like to add anything to the first criteria? Second, the benefits offered by the applicant, well, that's a tough one. Cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. It's straightforward, it's Sunday hours, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Other businesses in the, that specific area are open, a specific car wash, there was a, Delta Sonic was also granted a variance for a similar request. Would anyone like to add anything for the second criteria? Third, the requested area variance is not substantial, like in Sunday hours, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and in consideration of, as the businesses mentioned earlier, have Sunday hours, that should not have any kind of negative impact on that neighborhood, so therefore it's not substantial. Any additional comments for the third criteria? Fourth, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. There's been no evidence presented to this board that would have any indication that there will be an adverse effect with specific to the Sunday hours. Any additional comments, concerns with the fourth, fifth, excuse me, fourth criteria? Fifth, the alleged difficulty is self-created. Anyone like to add any conditions with the proposed resolution? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
A second, I make that motion?
All right, a second?
A second.
Leah, thank you, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thanks so much for your patience.
Thank you very much.
That's the way they all would be.
Mr. Johnson, thanks for your patience. Do you would like to put up a pole barn?
Yes, I am Peter Johnson, owner of 7355 Dryer Road, looking to build a barn in front of the house, just due to the difficulties of the property. It's a very deep lot, 1,500 feet, and the house is way in the back at 1,200 feet, so looking around the property ourselves and with some builders, this was the only suitable location we could find.
I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
Oh, sorry. Is that better? So looking around the property, we, we brought in some builders, and this was the, what, what we determined was the, the best location in terms of flatness, least impact to the land, the furthest we could get setbacks to any of the neighboring properties. And about it.
Matt, you have questions?
Where, where exactly is the home to, on there? So, so there's the blue...
It's the, it's kind of the checkerbox rectangle.
All the way in the corner?
All the way in the back, yeah.
No, no further questions, I, I, I think this falls in a similar... No further questions, I think this falls in a similar category as many others that it, you know, because of its location, it's, wouldn't have any impact to the neighborhood or their characteristics to the neighborhood or the environment, with it being forward to the front line of the home here, in this case.
Alexis, questions? Leah?
Just a couple of questions. What are you proposing to use the barn for?
Personal use, we've got just storage and maintenance of cars and tractors and boats and a camper that we have.
And what utilities are you putting in there? Just electricity or anything, anything other than electricity?
Just electricity, no sewer, no water.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Great, okay. So, just for clarification, the, is it a garage, a shed? What are we calling it? It's not a shed, it's too big to be a shed.
No, it's a pole barn.
54 by 62?
Yeah, it's a 40 by 60 building with a 12-foot lean-to off the side, so the total dimension's 54 by 62.
All right, and it's approximately 429 feet from the road?
Yes.
All right, is that measurement from the right-of-way or the road's edge, or where are you measuring it from?
That's from the right-of-way, the property line.
Okay. Can you give us an idea of why you can't comply with the code, or in other words, why can't you put that barn alongside of the home or behind the home?
So, we looked at putting it behind, there's only 250 feet behind the house to the rear property line, but there's also a 50-foot elevation drop, so it's about a 20% grade straight down to the back property line there.
Help me, would it be cost prohibitive to put that barn behind the house?
Yeah, it would be cost prohibitive and I would say impactful to the environment, have to take down a lot of trees and bring in a lot of outside fill.
Where the proposed barn is going to go, do you have any intention on removing any of the vegetation, trees, whatever it is, in that 429 feet that's from the right-of-way to the proposed barn?
No, nothing in that 429 feet.
All right. Anyone from the public want to speak for or against the application? Tell us where you are.
James Fenwick, 7325 Dryer Road, and I'm one of his neighbors, and I could, from the corner of my property, could actually see that and have no problem at all with it. It's the fact that our properties are both well off the road, and the top topography of his property goes straight down behind his house, so we couldn't put anything there.
You would agree then, it would be cost prohibitive to try and put that barn behind his home?
Yeah, it would weigh cost prohibitive.
Okay, that's what we're looking for. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak for or against the application? Any other questions, comments, concerns? Anyone? Susie, we're good? Anything else you want to add?
No, that's it.
Let's go through the proposed resolution. All right, first, an undesirable change would not be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the area variance. That's indicate that it's a flag lot, it's approximately 1,200 feet from the right-of-way of the road. It is heavily vegetated, it would be difficult, if not cost prohibitive, to comply with the code and place the barn either behind or alongside of the home. Also, it says, the applicant has submitted documentation that it's 8.177 acres, and the proposed barn would be 429 feet from the right-of-way of the road.
And 50, over 50 feet from each sideline.
Add that too. Anything else that should be added for the first criteria? Second, the benefit offered by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. As stated for the first criteria, the, it would be cost prohibitive to place the 54 by 62 barn behind the home due to the topography. Anyone want to add anything for the second criteria? Third, the requested area variance is substantial, just due to the distance from, in front of the home, creates an argument that it is substantial. However, there's sufficient vegetation that you shouldn't be able to see it from dryer, and there was also a neighbor that indicated, not only that it would be cost prohibitive to place the barn behind the home, but also the neighboring property would be difficult to see from. Fourth, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. There's been no evidence submitted that would indicate there would be any kind of environmental Fifth, the alleged difficulty is self-created. As far as conditions go, any thoughts or concerns about conditions for this proposed Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
A motion to approve.
Matt, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Fred, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried, thanks so much.
Great, thank you.
I live nearby, if you need anything to put in it, I could stop over.
Okay, thanks.
Adam, anything for us?
Nope.
Anyone else? Good, I would entertain a motion for an adjournment. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thanks so much. Thank you, everyone, for attending the training.